Thanks, everybody. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. Towards a flag somewhere. I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
To the flag.
The United States.
Of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
And to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President Daley.
Here.
Vice President Headland. Trustee Clements.
Here.
Trustee McNaul.
Here.
And trustee Pargett.
Thank you, everybody, for joining us via Zoom tonight. Our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, February 23 at 7:00 PM in, hopefully, in the auditorium small gym. And today is our, we had a snow day at school. And they're, I think, just wrapping up the clearing of the snow, hence why we are meeting via Zoom tonight. The other thing I just want to mention is that our annual Board of Education trustee candidate petition availability is here, which means those who are interested in running for school board are invited to start the process. And that start, that process begins with gathering a petition from, from Catherine Platt. And Ms. Platt, can I ask you to just give any details about that process?
I'm sure. The petitions will be available starting tomorrow in the district office. And people can stop in and get them directly from the office, or they can email me, and I'm cplatt@haldaneschool.org. And the petition and the first campaign expenditure statement is due by 5:00 PM on Monday, April 19.
Thank you. And I'm sure I can speak for all of us when I say that we are all very open and happy to speak with anybody who's interested about serving on the board. So if anybody has any questions for us, information gathering questions, you don't have to commit to running just because you asked a question. But if anybody would like to learn more about what we do, how do we do it? I think I can volunteer all of us for being happy to answer any questions. So please don't hesitate to chat. Okay, so now we're going to go into the public hearing for the Haldane Central School District protocols for the public health emergency. So I'm going to open the public hearing. And I will turn it over to Dr. Benante to give some information.
Thanks, Jen. And good evening, everyone. I'll have comments about all sorts of school-related items in a few moments. But at some point in the fall, a law was passed by Governor Cuomo, which required school district safety plans to be updated to include an additional annex, which spoke to the process and procedures related to how districts would respond in the event of pandemic or other similar crisis or emergency. So a bit unique that we were asked to develop a plan for this somewhat in the middle of our facilitation of crisis management. That being said, it became a requirement, and we wanted to make sure that we were in compliance and that our safety plan was updated to include this respective component, which is not that extensive. So the board's been provided, well, first, let me take you back. So we worked with Alteris, our safety and security consultants, to develop an outline of this particular component of the district-wide safety plan. In turn, we shared this component with our district-wide safety team for their review and for their feedback. We finalized this particular component of the plan and have now inserted it into the district-wide safety plan. Now, you had already approved the district-wide safety plan prior to the start of the school year. So really, the only new information that's included in this particular component is the language which speaks to how, which, how we would designate essential employees. Just as you may recall, not everyone in our school district was considered an essential employee. At the beginning of the pandemic, certain employees were designated as such. Our cafeteria staff and certain maintenance and operations staff notably. The plan additions also include that the district will allow other employees to work remotely to the extent that they can, and that will provide our employees and our, and will accommodate families with the necessary material for learning to be facilitated remotely in the event that we cannot have all students and staff on campus during a pandemic. So those are probably the two primary assurances now that are included as part of the safety plan. There are some other relatively minor ones to those that are included as well. And those are here now for the public's review. We are required to have a public comment period. That's what we're doing this evening. As similar to how we normally would with the adoption of the district-wide safety plan. And we did include, assuming there would be limited comment on this this evening, we did include this for adoption later on this evening, assuming that the board and members of the community do not have extensive comment or questions. We do have to have this approved by March 1. So we do have one other meeting. If there was a feeling on the part of the board that, or a desire to wait, we can, we have room to do that. But we did include it on later on in the agenda for, for adoption, if the board's comfortable to do so this evening. So with, I'll pause there. And if there's any questions from our board, we do have a couple of the members of the, of our community that are, I know, attendees. However, they may not have questions about this particular component. I would just say to our meeting attendees, if you do have a question or a comment, please just use the raise your hand feature, and we can promote you to a panelist to hear those questions or concerns about this component at this time, if, if you would like to. And the board is open to asking questions at this point as well.
And Dr. Benante, just for clarity, so we're, we're approving this kind of as an addendum really to the regular safety plan. But moving forward, this will just be included in our safety plan approval process, which we do annually. So we're doing this as a separate step right now because it's new. But moving forward, it will just be included in our regular.
Correct. Thank you, Jen. This will be a required component of all plans moving forward. So it's, it's embedded into this year's plan because it's, it's an update. And then it will be a regular component when you see our draft plan again, probably next August.
Any questions, comments from the board? I do not see any questions or comments from the public. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing. May I have a second, please? All those in favor?
I.
I.
Great. So that concludes our public hearing, and we'll get to that, the voting process on this later on in our meeting. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Benante to continue with his.
Thanks, Jen. And again, good evening, everyone. We've had two snow days now, so I hope everyone's done, fared okay digging out. We're still, we're still working on it here. We do hope to open schools on time tomorrow. I was just in communication with Mr. Walsh. There won't be any issues on campus. Those aren't a concern. It's just assuring that our roads, in particular, the side roads and whatnot in the area, are passable for buses. So we'll be assessing that first thing in the morning. And our hope is that the highway department is busy at work through the evening and that there's no issue with, with opening on time tomorrow. So we're still monitoring that, but the campus is ready to go. Our team worked really hard over the last two days, and thanks to them for that. With the school closure, I'll just provide a few COVID-related updates as I normally do. We did have another testing day scheduled for Monday, which unfortunately we'll have to, we had to cancel, and we'll have to talk about rescheduling. Given the fact that we've had two snow days now, I, I am going to meet with our team to see if there's a way we can honor these appointments during the regular school day so as to not have to have an all-remote day. Keep in mind, President's Day weekend is a long weekend for us. So I don't want to have to, you know, have another disruption to the regular schedule for the week than what we've already had because of weather and some holidays that are approaching. So I'll be rethinking that with my team tomorrow, and we'll get a communication out to the families who had appointments scheduled to let them know when we can honor them. Let's see, you know, I would say, you know, some, every, again, every couple of weeks, just keeping with the theme, some things come up that are interesting, present some unique challenges for us. Notably, over the last two weeks, athletics has gotten a lot of attention. At the state level, Governor Cuomo had indicated that athletics would be permitted to begin with approval of the local health department. Our local health department was working on some things related to that. I had received a communication from the health department on Sunday, which I interpreted as the formal approval for, for high-risk sports to begin, which for us would include basketball and volleyball. However, there was a notation on that communication that some forthcoming guidance would be coming from the health department. So, you know, in good faith, I had expressed to Mr. Romanino, our interim A.D., that I felt we were ready to begin on Monday, weather-dependent, obviously. Today, I received that guidance, our additional guidance from the Department of Health that I think has given me and given some of our other, my colleagues pause into whether or not the Department of Health is, there's some caveats to whether or not we can begin athletics. So we're going to meet tomorrow and try to make the sense of what we received today. Because I'm interpreting, you know, so I interpreted what I received on Monday, not to get too far in the weeds on this, as it's up to you. If you think it's okay to play, go ahead, which was fine. But I, today, the information I received, I interpreted as, well, yes, it's up to you. However, if you're going to play, there are these caveats and these assurances that you need to, we need to have from you in order for you to do so. So I think there's a difference here between, can we start practices at least, or is this for competition? Perhaps a couple of days' practices with some certain restrictions in place before we, we get into opening things up a little bit more. And certainly before a competition, I can deal with that. But if it's anything more than that, I guess I, I can't help but to express my concerns back to the Department of Health for how this is now being facilitated. You know, if it's our decision, then it's our decision. If it's not, then, then you take it. And that's kind of what's been going on over the last couple of weeks is, you know, ultimately, when this stuff comes down, it's school-sponsored activity. We're assuming the risk and we're assuming the liability. And I think the Department of Health is, is cognizant of that. And I don't, I don't mean to sound critical of them. I know these were not decisions they anticipated having to make or be involved in because they weren't in the fall. And, you know, they had this somewhat put upon them by the governor's office. So, you know, we're, we're just trying to work through it. The, the issue I'm having, unlike others, is that this season we're in right now is really condensed. Winter sports is essentially now a one-month season, and it's, it's the shortest season or shortest month of the year. So, you know, every day that passes is a day that, you know, our kids can't engage in athletics, who may want to. And quite frankly, I think we've done, I think we've done most of what the Department of Health is asking us in preparation. So I feel like for Haldane, we're in a good spot. You know, whereas other districts, you know, I don't know where they are. So for us, I do. But I want to make sure that ideally, if we're taking this step, we're doing so with the blessing of the Department of Health because technically it was their decision to make. They seem to relinquish that to us, but they're still holding on to part of it. So I need to sort that out tomorrow. And I, I say this in full candor because I know our coaches have been working closely with Eric Romanino around this. So I know that they're aware of kind of the back and forth that has taken place, and I know there's some confusion on their part. And I know that has translated to some of our kids and our, and our families. So we'll try to get to the bottom of that with no disruption to our schedule. But it's definitely thrown us for a bit of a loop. And, you know, we struggle with it because there's enough going on, you know, we're just trying to operate the school. And now this is something that, you know, quite frankly, you know, three weeks ago, if it was going to be our decision, we could have just been working on it, and we could have been ready to go without any issues. But that's been the way things have, have gone with respect to some items over the last, you know, 11 months now. And the implications.
I have, oh, sorry.
Yeah.
I have, I just wanted one clarification. This is only related to the high-risk sports, so basketball and volleyball. There are other sports that are, winter track, for example, is, is already occurring. I just.
Track's been going without issue. So that's good. It's been largely outside, and now the snow is going to present an issue for that. But track has been going just fine. It'll also apply to football, Peggy, for the spring. So just to keep that in mind, I think it's, but we have time for football, so that's not so much a primary concern. You know, basketball's been, and volleyball have been, I'd say chomping at the bit to get started here over the last few weeks. Now, there's implications here for other high-risk activities. So naturally, with the governor's blessing somewhat for high-risk sports to begin, now the questions are arising, well, what about the performing arts? Those were also determined to be high-risk activities, which we had to accommodate for the regular school day. And then also, there's implications for anything occurring after the school day. And I don't have any additional information on that. I would expect that we will, and we'll probably receive similar, similar guidance in, in the weeks to come. But we don't have, right now, the ability to approve such activity to begin. In the background, we are discussing with our practitioners and advisors for those activities to, again, anticipate that if it were to open up, what we could do to have our kids or provide our kids with the opportunity to perform with certain restrictions in place. So I think that will be coming soon. And right now, our focus is, continues to be internally on making sure our staff get vaccinated. So the Department of Health has been great in setting up pods. Those pods fill very quickly, and we were able to get about 10 more staff members vaccinated last week, which is good. And we'll hope to continue to process through our staff. And I'll be able to provide the board soon with a full account of what percentage of our staff has their first dose versus not, or is scheduled to have their first dose by a certain time. We're collecting that information. And I'll be able to share that with you, just to give you an idea of where we're at with that. And just a note, next week, I'll be participating in a follow-up on the Kylens current, another current conversation, which was well-attended by the members of our community last time. So I'm looking forward to that. That'll be next Wednesday. I haven't done a community update in a little while, just giving folks a break from those. So that may springboard another community update. I do think as we get some resolutions to, resolution to athletics, potentially some shifts we're making with our testing program on site, a vaccination update. I think we'll have plenty to put together and provide an update after the current conversation to our school community as well. I'm deliberate with those because I want to do them in a way where I'm sharing information that's useful and, and truly is an update from where we've been. So, you know, I haven't had really too much new information to share through January. But I do think by, through these initial weeks of February, we will have plenty, and we'll go from there. But next Wednesday, 7:00, current conversation, and we'll put an announcement out around that. And with that, Jen, I'll, I'll just pause and see if there's any other questions from the board.
I have a question for you. Could you speak a little bit? So now we, this was our third snow day.
Yes.
Could you speak a little bit about what to anticipate in terms of remote learning, snow day, and how it's on the.
Sure. Well, one caveat, I'm meeting with our teachers association tomorrow. So I do want to talk to them a little bit. So I don't want to get too far out in front of this. But the state has made the option available to us to, in lieu of taking a snow day, of using it and making it an all-remote learning day. And we had stated at the beginning of the year that we already had three snow days built into the calendar. So they're really, that we were going to use them, and we have at this point, a little sooner than I would have liked, but we've used them. So now, moving forward, we have to determine, are we going to make, if we have weather like this again, are we going to make those all-remote learning days? My recommendation will be that, that we do. It allows us to maintain integrity to our schedule for the remainder of the year, our calendar for the remainder of the year, and will help us avoid having to make any changes to spring break or to Memorial Day weekend where we have those makeup days. So my position is that we should use those that we have and we have built in, which we have up until this point. And, and now that we should consider in the event of further inclement weather, that would, under normal circumstances, cause us to close of shifting the day to an all-remote learning day, so we don't have to get into any makeup days later on in the school year. But I'm not there yet. So I want to talk to our teachers about that tomorrow, potentially have a broader conversation with our staff and, and make sure we're ready to go with that, and that there's agreement that this makes sense for us, and we go from there. Any other questions? Jen, we have two reports tonight. So would you like me to roll right in?
Well, did you, I have the review of tenure candidates.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't have my, my agendas behind the screen with all of your faces. So I apologize. I like to see you when I'm, when I'm talking. So Jen and I have been talking, and typically, we're, we're upon the time of the year where we would meet an executive session to discuss the tenure, the teaching and administrative candidates who are eligible for tenure later on this school year. And this is an important process that the board's involved in each year. And typically, we have facilitated this as a conversation. And Jen, please, if I'm, if I don't set this up in the best way, I think we wanted to pause and check in with the board to see before we move forward and engaging in the conversation again this year, are there any ideas or thoughts regarding how we could make this process most useful to the board individually and as a group, so that the board felt that it was in the best position to act on a recommendation later on in the spring, which is typically when we put those on a board agenda.
Yeah, I just offer a little more context that we, you know, we don't have meetings when we hire a new hire, right? We see the resumes, and we generally take the administrator's recommendation, and that's that. We do have meetings about tenure candidates because, you know, that's one of the most important decisions a district makes in, in terms of personnel, right? When we make decisions about conferring tenure or not. And although the board may generally be comfortable just taking the administration's recommendation on that as well, historically, we've had a meeting where the administrators go through kind of each candidate. They give us a little, and we've all been there at this point. We've all been to these meetings. They go through and they just kind of give a little laundry list really of what this teacher is doing, how long they've been doing it, what they need to work on, what they're great at, and then move on. And I think the more interesting perhaps, or longer conversations we have tend to be around the teachers that maybe need a little more support than the teachers that are really great. But Dr. Benante and I are talking about, you know, what is most useful to us? What do we want to hear from the administrators? Or what do we not want to hear? What do we want to hear? How do we make this like a really valuable activity? Because it does take a lot of time, right? The administrators prepare all this information. They set aside their time to be with us. We set aside our time to be with them. You know, it's generally a time commitment. So we wanted to make, you know, revisit it and make sure that we were using that time wisely. So I don't know if you guys have any kind of off-the-cuff thoughts, or if.
I definitely do. Yeah. I mean, I, I, I think this is a practice that is not common across school districts. I think I'm right about that.
I don't know if you're right about that, actually. I did reach out to my Westchester Putnam School Board Association director with that exact question because I was wondering if we do this, just because we always do it, but it's not really something standard. And her sense was that it is pretty standard. Not that she knows.
Because I think it's, yeah, I mean, I do think it is somewhat outside of our, I mean, my memory of why this was explained to me, because I don't think it's something that's happened for years and years and years, although I could be wrong about that. With that, you know, the board really wanted, you know, since we were going to vote to approve the tenure for these teachers, and it's such a big, that's a big deal, that we, we wanted to have some, you know, some background information. We, we, we wanted more than just the recommendation, I think. Even though for most things, we accept, you know, we accept the recommendations for, for most hiring kinds of issues. So, I mean, although I guess if it's more common, I was under the impression that it was a fairly unique practice to us. I wasn't aware that it was a more common practice. And if it is more common practice in the region, then I might actually just reserve the comments that I was going, you know, I was going to make, yeah.
I mean, just if other districts do it, doesn't mean we have to do it. I mean, if there's no.
Right, right. I, I mean, I do feel like there's a way in which it is outside of our responsibility, or our sort of, like, what, what board members' responsibilities are, right? Like, it's not really, that's a pretty nitty-gritty, day-to-day involvement that I, I do think typically lies outside of board, you know, board responsibilities. And, you know, I've said this before, but, you know, one of the ways I often approach these things is like, if we were a bigger district, would it be possible for us to even do that? That's my kind of litmus, litmus test for whether I think it really falls squarely within our, our primary responsibilities and, and, and doesn't. And so anyway, that's all I'm going to say right now.
Any other, like, initial thoughts on it to share?
Well, I was going to say, similarly, I doubt that it has ever been the case that the board, maybe, you know, of an instance, had disagreed with the recommendation. So it's, it doesn't seem to me to be about assent. I mean, we're going to trust the administrator's opinion on, you know, the appropriateness of any particular candidate for tenure. But I will say in terms of, I mean, because it is such a big deal, if we, if we are getting this information outside of approving it, I don't know if there's any additional way for us to either celebrate or acknowledge those individuals who are receiving tenure, so that we have some context for that. But we don't go about the business of really doing that with individual candidates. So I don't know how it's actionable thereafter, other than having the context for it, which I think is valuable for us to know and to know particularly those candidates who might be under consideration or struggling in one way or another, just having some background and why we wouldn't bring someone. And so it might be a question of, maybe it's a select, a handful of candidates that in one way or another are worth remarking on as opposed to all the candidates, if we're talking about the most valuable way to use our time, let's put it that way.
Yes, and, and, and we tend to get a review of all candidates, which means, you know, in their first year, second year, third year, and those who are actually up for tenure in their fourth year. So we tend to get the whole, whole span of probationary teachers. That has been typically the.
Is it a problem to continue the way we're doing it?
It is not a problem in any way, shape, or form.
No, I think the conversation with, that Jen and I had, Margaret, was just making sure we're being deliberate in reviewing all of our processes and just. In reviewing uh all of our processes and just not. Uh and I mean this respectfully, not just accepting the fact that the way we've done it is the way we should always do it. Does it continue to serve a good? My question, I think, to Jen was, is this useful to the board? Like, are our board members finding this time worthwhile? Is it aligned with what they feel they need? Um and Jen similarly had, um you know, kind of reflective questions along those lines. So we just don't want to kind of take for granted that because we've done it this way all along that it's that it's working. Um and I I would also just say, I don't think we're looking to make any dramatic changes, you know, to what we're going to do in the next month. As much as as we enter into it again, uh maybe asking the board to also reflect on is this. Uh you know, let's kind of be curious about the process just as much as we're engaged in it. Because it it would be a good opportunity to explore any further modify, right now, any modifications that we want to make for the year, the following year.
I mean, I guess I would, I mean, I guess I would want us to go into the process this year. With the with the with the. I don't want to say mindset, but with from the perspective of of does this really allow us to be? Better board members? Does it really allow us to serve? Is it really supporting serving? The district by going through this process? Like, is it, is it, yeah, I mean, it's and 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 is it? Do do we need to have that level, that that deep, that deep level of detailed information about teachers? About, you know, detailed personnel matters to 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 make these decisions moving forward, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, and I'd say that's a question for me, Peggy. That's something that I was uh brought up to to Dr. Benanti is that. You know, I think it's, we have to be careful about um feeling like it's the board's responsibility. To know every, all the inner workings of a teacher's classroom. We don't have the expertise to.
We don't.
Decisions based on that. Uh that's not our responsibility. Um however, at the same time, it certainly gives us insight into how our school is working. Into how our administrators are making decisions. Um and that's really valuable. Um so it's a little bit of a catch 22 for me. I I also think that it is actually incredibly important. For the board to be included in conversations about teachers who are struggling. That may not be recommended to have tenure. Um they may, we may grant them an extension. We may just terminate them. Uh those kinds of conversations, I think um the board should be privy to.
So I I'm gonna, I'm gonna vehemently agree with all of you.
First year teachers.
I'll vehemently agree with all of you in that. Um I think that the detailed level of insight on an individual teacher is. Not not for us, useful and information and in in interesting potentially in terms of. I'm more interested in especially these days that um what what is? What we have a sense of being a norm for an assessment strategy is actually rigorous and carried out. And um I'm more interested in the regular, these are the thing, these are the bars that we're holding our teachers to for tenure. I'm going to show you that they met the bar in X, Y, or Z way, and then you are going to approve them because. They have gone through the process that we understand to be a process, so that when Phil leaves or the board leaves the board, there is a process in place. And we understand that it's not, they're doing a pretty good job and we feel like they'll grow it. So it's, there's none of that. Because I I am concerned, not concerned, but I'm cognizant that te- teacher tenure has impact. On hundreds of future generations of students. Um and it is the one of the most important things. Then I think we'll touch into this one and get into the uh a a later agenda item of hiring, recruitment, retention and building. And I think we need to be making sure that every part of that process is being done with a thoughtfulness and the. Appropriate level of attention to the, I I would hate to get into a situation 10 years from now where some superintendent was like. Oh, yeah, and it turns out because some uh some relationship, some, they're friends of their whatever, they're going to get tenure. Just because there's no, there's no oversight in any way, shape or form.
So it sounds like we all have some similar um. Thoughts, not that we need to make any decisions about this right now. Phil, do you feel like you have kind of enough feedback? Careful what you ask for, but.
It's okay, it's okay. And just for the board's reference, I should have mentioned this. We have, we currently have, uh by my count, and I believe it's accurate. Uh 16 untenured faculty members. You know, so they fall within their first three or four years, depending on um uh their, whether or not they had previous tenure or not. So that's that's a significant chunk. Uh when we have probably around 80 teaching faculty um uh or related service staff uh in the district. So we're uh and and again, we're going to have, just looking out, we're going to have groups that are gonna. Uh there's going to be turnover of, you know, in in years to come of, you know, five, six, potentially a year for successive years. So I think the fact that we're having this discussion now uh i- is going to help us proactively. Uh make sure that our processes and there's good alignment in our process between the board's expectations and the administration's actions. Uh and work with our teachers in the years ahead, so.
Can I make one more comment about this as we think about this? So one way to think about, I really like what John said, right? Like, I I mean, there there must be some, like, the 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 systemic processes that the administrators engage in. To do the observations and the criteria for making these these recommendations. That, you know, that could be a way to frame this. The other thing was if it's like 16 and we think it's going to be more, like, maybe, maybe. It would be good to know, like, are there, are there? Is are there ways to 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 categorize the the teachers? So say, for example, it's a bunch of the primary grade teachers, right? And if it's a bunch of the primary grade teachers, and we knew this at the very beginning of the year or the beginning of the previous year. Like, the board could have, could. I'm I'm thinking about ways that we can think about systematically increase, increase the. The the capacity of our teachers, right? So like if um I, you know, like if if there were departments where we thought they were going, like. Certain departments where we thought there were going to be vacancies, right? So, you know, high school, social studies or English or, you know, the the primary grades. Or or, you know, to and then to sort of think about, think about it that way, right? I I mean, I I'm wondering, I don't know, like.
No, I I Peggy, just to comment on that, I I think there's, there's potentially some good. Uh there's, there's an opportunity there to coordinate in a way, just to give you an example, out of the 16. Uh seven are special education teachers or special.
Like, that's a big deal.
That's a big deal. And then a number of the remaining chunk, I would say, fall into the visual or performing arts. So uh seven special educators and then one, two. Uh three, four, five art or music teachers.
Okay, so anyway, that was just one more thought about.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
How to, how to structure this again to think about building, you know, capacity and where the, where the board could possibly really make a. Contribution.
I don't want to lose at the end, when we announce it and we have it at a board meeting, that we do have a little celebration for them. I want to be sure that that is, yeah, that that is definitely not lost in the grand scheme of things. Because, yeah, last year it kind of was, and it's a big deal for them. And sometimes those, you know, sometimes those are teachers that we've never met, because our kids didn't have them or or they, you know, they were. Our kids were older than that when they were there. So I think, like, to personally meet the board and and give them our nod of approval. That little moment, I want to be sure we hold on to that personalization of it.
Yeah.
Thanks, Margaret.
Okay, so I think let's leave that there for the moment and we'll circle back to it. Maybe uh Dr. Benanti and I can regroup on that.
Sounds great.
And this moves very nicely into our nice next topic of human resources administrator. We just set you up.
I think so. Uh thank you for that. And I'm going to share my screen just because I have some slides uh to go through and I'll. Try to be. Concise here with the board. Okay. Uh so just to to start, over the last few months. Uh you've heard our administrators reference the importance of establishing processes, and we're hitting on that again. As it relates to um tenure review uh that enable our people to do their best work with kids. Uh and I just want to underscore, as you already know, we're a very people centric organization, you know, we work. Uh with young children, uh we bring a large group of adults together each day to facilitate those processes around teaching and learning. Uh it's a human resource rich environment. However, I I do believe that our current approach to the management of human resources. Which essentially equates to every administrator owning a little slice of the pie, I'll say. It's significant, notably in the cost of time uh for those administrators. And then uh also of expertise, uh that I I think there's been a variety of scenarios that we've encountered. Uh not only, not just this year, but in previous years where we really needed a level of expertise. Uh to approach uh an issue or a matter uh or implement a procedure. Um that we didn't have. Uh so it leaves this feeling that we could be doing better as a team. Uh and we could do, be doing better by our employees. Uh and and that's a concern for me. So we, as I mentioned, we we're currently relying on uh every admin to to own a a piece of. The human resource management in the district. The superintendent position is aligned in a way. Where he or she manages employee relations. Um which would include contract negotiations, any labor law compliance matters that come up. And the oversight of certain business processes. Um obviously, there's support there through the business manager. Uh yet, we also have a payroll and benefits clerk position, which oversees the administration of the health insurance plan. Uh the employee assistance program uh and other related benefits. I I would say, just in full candor, at times I see our employees. Leaning on the payroll and benefits clerk as the human resource manager. Um somewhat by default, because they have questions related to benefits or uh maybe an EAP question. And that's where they've gone to for support. Uh and I would just say, I, this is. You know, I I think we've done a great job. All of our people have done a great job in the past of of maybe even working outside their roles or their formal titles a little bit. Uh our just, our payroll and benefits clerk shouldn't be the liaison to our employees for those matters necessarily. Um that that really should be overseen uh by an administrator. So I've tried to do my best to 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 find if there was any existing research on when school districts specifically should hire a human resource manager. And uh or a school, I'm sorry, um uh human resource administrator. And I could only find general um uh information on uh organizations as a whole, businesses, whatever. The organization may be. Um and there seems to be general consensus that it's necessary to hire a dedicated human resource professional. When an organization reaches somewhere between 50 and 100 employees, by that point, your organization is big enough where you're going to have, you're just going to benefit from. Having someone dedicated to oversee uh a a series of of matters as it relates to the management of 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 your personnel. But uh and there's also no hard and fast rule uh when it comes time to to make this change in the organization. It's not as if you hit this threshold and you you have to hire somebody. Uh that just doesn't exist. But within the the research that I was uh able to read, there seems to be an understanding that. When you begin specializing as an organization, when you begin creating departments that oversee very specific functions in your, in your work. It's, at that point, you should have a dedicated, your organization's big enough to have a dedicated human resource function as well. We currently have 195 employees and I I just want to state that. Um I I think some folks don't always realize that we have a. You know, it's a significant number of personnel uh on our campus each day. So that's 195, not including substitutes uh and the like. So um we're, we're a pretty big organization. We have a thousand people in some way, shape or form that come onto our campus each day, and the majority of them are students. But uh 200 of them approximately are are employees. So we're at this point, uh and this was unanticipated this school year, uh where we've reexamined some of our spending and our costs. Um and we feel, and uh you know, I'm making the recommendation for your consideration to uh restructure these costs in a way. Where we could bring in dedicated human resource administrative support. Uh so we had a breakage on two key retirees. Um notably our payroll benefits clerk, um and also our dispatcher. Uh we had um realized some, some, I'd say savings, but some breakage that occurs with that. Um a stipend that we worked into the new title, um or I'm sorry, responsibilities that we worked into the new title. So we no longer have a a stipend that we need to pay. We, as we mentioned a couple uh meetings ago, have refinanced some of the board, some of the district's existing debt. To the benefit of the school district. Uh what's most significant is we had a maintenance position that we had not rehired for. Uh and we have determined that we are, do not need to hire for that maintenance position. That we're able to manage uh both on the grounds and in the buildings uh with our existing structure. Uh and then we've also uh have not hired for a part-time driver position. Uh that had been hanging out there for a bit of time. So so with those costs. Add them together, we essentially are at. A a figure that we feel we could hire a dedicated human resource admin with the related benefits that are often accompanying. Such a position. Now, there's key functions uh that are being maintained now, uh but that we would really target for someone's exclusive focus. Uh moving into uh if we were to hire for this position. The first is recruitment and hiring. So this obviously is. Consistent with the discussion that we were just having as related to our untenured teachers. Uh you know, I would see that this is an area that our building principals uh take on as a key area of the responsibilities. And and our principals would still be involved in a hiring process. However, I would say that with a dedicated human resource support. We can be more proactive in establishing uh relationships with local universities or universities that are. Uh prominent in the terms of t- in terms of teacher education. Uh to uh make sure that we are drawing candidates and truly recruiting candidates in from those preparation programs to Haldane. Uh we're a small school district. We sit in a beautiful area. Um and I I think we're in a a key position where we, there's access here. To New York City, um you know, all the way through the Hudson Valley area. But if folks have never, you know, come through cold, cold spring, they 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 may not necessarily know where Haldane is. And what we have to offer to them as candidates uh for a position in our district. And I I do think that most of the educators that work here really enjoy working here for for some, you know, very important reasons. But um you know, we would stand to benefit, I think, from connecting those who are in teacher education programs uh throughout our region. Uh to Haldane, uh where they otherwise may not be aware of 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 who we are. Uh there's a piece on compensation management uh that I think is relevant as we get into uh contract negotiations. That a human resource professional would be very helpful. Uh we belong to a network um within our region of other school districts. That actively uh monitor um contracts and contract settlements throughout our region. Uh we currently are not active ourselves in that group or in that network, simply because. Our our administrators are are have other priorities. And uh we haven't, we just don't have consistent presence uh in those meetings. And that uh we do stand to benefit when we're going into negotiations of being a little more closely attuned to what other local districts have. Bargained with their units as it relates to salary and benefits to make sure that we're staying competitive. Uh and that we're also, uh you know, I think we're upon these times where we want to be creative too, uh with what we offer to our employees and and how we offer. Those things. Uh an example of that would be, we only have one national board certified teacher. I think the national board certification process is something that's a real benefit to our teaching staff. And we would stand to benefit as a school district, our students would stand to benefit from having more nationally board certified teachers. Embedded into our classrooms or working in our classrooms. The, we have some contract language as it relates to it, but there's really other districts have been a little bit more progressive in establishing a process of support. For teachers who are interested in pursuing this. So the good news is, we have somebody who's done this already, who's gone through the process themselves. And who we can position to support other educators who may want to be, but. You know, I think if we have a dedicated, by having someone dedicated near a human resources, we can be more creative. In developing the structures to align our staff with opportunities like that, which has a direct impact on our kids. By putting even more highly qualified teachers at the head of our classrooms that they're in each day. The performance management process we were talking about earlier, the strong human resource manager is gonna oversee and really take ownership over the performance review process. Starting with investing time in making sure that we've identified. The qualities, the skills, the attributes of our very best educators and establishing that in, I guess. Distilling that into a candidate profile that we don't know, that we not only use for screening. Of candidates who are coming in, but we use through the tenure review process as a means of review. In addition to the traditional annual professional performance review process. So it's not just when we talk about our teachers, the 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 Danielson framework for teaching is. An important process when we are assessing your teaching skills and abilities. But I think we would all agree that there are certain personal, personal. Skills, personality characteristics that are really important to us. In determining whether or not a person's the right fit for for our school community. And a good human resource management is going to spend a lot of time working on that and making sure our processes internally are aligned with that. And I would say we have, I just was going through a review process for a few of our tenure candidates. And a few of our teachers who are in their first year of teaching with us and it's. It's been a very busy school year for obvious reasons. So I understand why this would not be at the fore of everyone's mind right now. But really by this point in the school year, for any first year teacher. We have, should have provided not only direct feedback and opportunities to engage with those educators through the traditional performance review process. But we should also be engaging our folks in, you know, how they've approached their work with students outside of school. The clubs or activities that they may be engaged in with our student body that that does come up a little bit in the performance view process, but also. You know, how they're engaging in department meetings, how they're, are they, have they taken the time to observe their colleagues in their classrooms? And have we aligned them with our very best educators so they can see, hey, this is the the gold standard at Halve. And this is what you're striving for, we're striving for together with you. When it comes to how you're working with our kids each day and how you're working with our families outside of school. So again, having a dedicated person to create the space for that, I think will go a long way. You keep in mind, when our employees are brand new to the organization, that's when, that's the period of time, that first year. Certainly into the second and third year as well, but they're gonna, we're going to see the most growth in their, in their work. So we want to make sure we have those supports in place. I've listed others here, just in the interest of time, I think I'm hitting on some things that resonate with. With you all, we can come back to some of the particulars as it relates to key human resource functions if the board would like. Just a few more notes for me and we can open it up for discussion. As I mentioned, a proactive approach to recruitment, performance management and labor law. I think allows our building and department leaders to remain focused on teaching and learning as well. So these are related functions, but. You've heard me say, we want to keep the main thing, the main thing, and I'd really like to see our, our principals have more time. To engage with our teacher leaders around topics of teaching and learning, they do a great job with it now. But they would stand to benefit significantly if we could take some of the responsibilities related to personnel. Off of their plates and I think again, provide a higher quality of service to our employees. And as we've discussed already, I do think such a position will allow us to be a little bit more proactive. When it comes to anticipating our employee needs before they become issues. Turnover staff is one, we do our staff snapshot and we can often anticipate when we're gonna have a number of retirees. So working to fill those positions is would be beneficial. I don't want to ignore that, in addition to our teaching staff, we have a number of civil service employees, just as many. As we have teachers in our school district. So there's all the work around the school. That goes on to 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 create a dynamic learning environment for our kids, sometimes facilitating the civil service. Requirements when it comes to filling positions is a job in and of itself. This is largely left, quite frankly, it was left to Linda Dearborn when Linda was here for many years and now Megan Shields, and it is not easy. And there's a lot to, you know, in terms of testing, notifying our staff of tests that they're eligible for. The shift of positions, working directly with Putnam County Department of Civil Service, that in and of itself is quite a grind. And so again, a dedicated human resource administrator would really help in that area as well. I do think these last eleven months have really illustrated some of our issues, you know, when when the system's under stress, you can see kinda. Where, where, what your strengths are and maybe where you're exposed a bit. There's been several changes recently to federal and state laws that have had a direct impact on our employees. Workplace accommodations requests, which involve working with our district physician quite closely and sometimes an employee's physician. To discuss just the rationale and the basis for providing such a request, I don't think those are gonna go away anytime soon. Also paid leave benefits have been, you know, a significant topic this year. I think there's three different pieces of legislation that speak to an employee's right to take leave. In the event of a quarantine. Situation for themselves or for a family member or. In isolation order for themselves or for a family member. It's tough to keep track of all of that, and quite frankly, we've had to notify some of our employees of what their rights are. After the fact, and that's just a horrible place for us to be in as a leadership team, myself, you know, at the top of that, I, you know. Oh, by the way, we've just found out you were eligible for this, we know you were sick last month. We're gonna go back and retroactively now pay you for that time. Because it turns out you didn't have to take sick time, or maybe you were at a sick time and you went without pay. And you know, this law really establishes that we were required to pay you through that period. And you know, our employees have encountered a level of stress when it's come to some of this. And you know, I feel badly that in a couple of instances, we've had to go back and notify them of what their rights were to leave. After they've already, they had the need to take it. I think that, you know, that that impacts morale, it creates confusion among our staff. And with our labor groups and, you know, I think, you know, I really feel a responsibility to the board to. And to our employees to make that right and to put us in the position where we don't have to worry about that stuff coming up again. So just a reminder to the, to the board that we have gone, I consider this. Somewhat a restructure. And we've talked about restructuring and we always will, as we're examining what the district's current needs are and what our opportunities may be. So just as an overview and we can't give you the full organizational chart on one slide. So we're taking some liberties here just to highlight certain areas. You may recall back in two thousand seventeen eighteen. Generally, this was how one end of our district was organized, you had the superintendent who. Was that direct oversight of the business manager and the business, there's some more nuance to this than what we're depicting here. But the business manager serving as the key liaison between the director of facilities and the cafeteria manager. And then the director of facilities having several maintenance in operation positions underneath him or her. In the school district. So this was how we were operating in seventeen eighteen. In the fall of two thousand eighteen, we had recommended a shift in how we structured facilities. Through the establishment of what we would say more supervisory positions and then aligning support staff underneath those supervisory positions. And this included maintenance mechanics who serve as supervisors of various maintenance helpers or workers. In their work, both interior and exterior. So Mr. Lysikakis essentially serves as a supervisor of our interior work that's going on. He has staff that are working alongside him to facilitate workflow to keep the inside of our buildings running smoothly. Mr. Strong Coney again serves as somewhat the supervisor of our grounds, he has staff underneath him. That are that he's directing to manage the upkeep of our grounds. A day head cleaner, a night head cleaner, working with it, directing individuals, other cleaners who fall under them. To keep our buildings clean, to facilitate the daily cleaning schedule, both during the daytime and the evening time. And I would say that over the last two years, anecdotally and under, you know, some great leadership too with Tim. But really some great leadership, more of the granular level and inside the buildings and outside of it. I think there's been a direct impact on this, I think it's noticeable when you walk through our buildings, they're cleaner, they're safer. We're getting more proactive work done, there's painting going on, we have opportunities to paint. There's some renovations that are occurring when we have windows of opportunity along with some funding. To complete those renovations. So generally, I think the buildings look better right now than they did two or three years ago. And I think you see that when you do your walkthroughs with the board. So it's a similar mindset that we're trying to bring. To human resource management, just positioning, it's the mindset we were bringing also to the creation of the director of curriculum position. We've been beneficial to have contracted support through this year because it's just not a great time to hire yet. But will be in the coming months in the area of curriculum. And again, I think we'll see after a couple of years that there's now greater alignment, it's resulting in. Seeing our Halve essentials on display and more tangible in the work that's going on in our classrooms each day. So once, as Judy continues in this role and supports whoever transitions into it. We're gonna have some great things to share around that. So similarly, that's what we want to do in human resources. So this is just generally how it would look organizationally. Again, this is somewhat imperfect, I'm taking some liberties here, just for clarity sake. The human resources administrator would report directly to the superintendent, but they also would work closely with the business manager as well. These are two people we want working closely together because on the human resource end, they're seeing things and anticipating things that have a direct impact on our school budget, you know. And we need these two individuals working closely together. The payroll benefits management component, which we have a clerk for, again, has dual responsibilities. To both someone who's in the administrative leadership end for human resources and on the business leadership end as well. So so that becomes the core team that's overseeing responsibilities as it relates to human resources. And then its direct impact on our budget and how we fund our schools. And then I'm still trying to display below this, the director of curriculum, our building principals, our PPS director and athletic director still. Being a direct line to the superintendent as well. So this is just a snapshot of what our full leadership structure would look like under this model. And lastly, I'd be remiss if I didn't share, I don't think our work stops at human resources, I'm not recommending anything beyond the creation of that position. Tonight and for our future meeting, but we still have, I think, some, some organizational work to do in the area of instructional technology. So as we create a director of curriculum position, which we did, we have to fill it with. A long term person in the in the next few months. I do see this person now in a position to oversee technology integration. Infrastructure management, we will always have needs as it relates to those two things. We currently have Leah working as our tech integration specialist. We currently contract out to Edge Tech for our infrastructure management. That's fine, I'm not recommending necessarily any changes here. I am recommending that I will be aligning the director of curriculum position with more directly overseeing that work. But I do think that there's going to be a need in the data services realm for the school district. Then if there's a future opportunity, I would recommend us considering having a dedicated on person onsite who has expertise in data services. To serve one as our chief information officer, but also serve as our in-house expert. When it comes to examining data. That we may have available to us, but just may not have the time and the space to to analyze, to make informed decisions about. Program, informed decisions about what we can anticipate in terms of student performance or school accountability. And similar key responsibilities there that I would say right now are, again, still managed by our building principals to some extent. But we would benefit from having dedicated in-house support in some way there. I, these thoughts aren't fully fleshed out, but I feel confident enough to say, I feel like we're still a person short. In in data services. In some way, shape or form, whether we contract out for it or not, that's something for us to consider somewhere down the line, not necessarily for tonight. And I'd just be remiss if I didn't say, I did mention last year that when we create the director of curriculum position that they would serve as our CIO. And I still believe that in the short term, that's what they'll do. We will align that responsibility with that person, as you know, now, Miss Sniffin currently over serves as our chief information officer. But I would like to see that those responsibilities align with the director of curriculum when the time comes. So I don't want to get too far outside of the human resource support discussion. So with that, I'll just, I'll step out of this and answer any questions that that you have.
That was such a thorough presentation, I'm not sure anyone could have a question.
I have a question. So you said where the money is coming from, and I'm sure you're trying to make it tax neutral.
Yes.
There was a maintenance person and a part time bus driver that we didn't rehire.
Correct.
How much of that is due to COVID and are we gonna have to rehire those positions after COVID?
Sure, that's a good question. And can you, can you speak to that a little bit? Because I know you were engaged on this conversation in greater depth than I was with Tim. Just to talk through what our current needs versus our anticipated needs post-COVID. And whether or not we still feel confident we can go without those, that position and part of another position.
Sure, that is right now. The situation in the twenty twenty one budget. And I'm confident that we are not going to need the. The positions in payroll benefits, in the dispatcher position and that maintenance worker that that you're talking about. And I've had a couple of conversations with Tim and he's confident as well that the structure that's in place now is is very adequate. As far as the part time driver, we know that it's a little bit of a different situation this year in twenty twenty one. Than even it may be in twenty one, twenty two. So you're right, Margaret, in that maybe next year. Putting a part time driver in. Could happen and what I've shown in that chart that Phil included in his presentation. Was only half of the year for the bond refinancing savings. So that in at twenty eight, it's actually more than fifty thousand a year. And then that will flip. Because there is probably a need for that part time driver next year. But you know, instead of showing two different charts and trying to get into the weeds there.
Right, because of the fiscal year.
It's relevant.
Right.
And next year it does flip a little, but the other larger areas of funding are still, still hold.
I just don't want to decide we're gonna do something and not be able to support it long term.
Oh yeah, we're definitely in that mindset too, Margaret. So even with, you'll, you'll hear, I don't know if I said it, but I I should have. Even though we feel we could do this right now. Because of the way, these are, these are monies that are there, we don't have individuals in these positions or we're not utilizing them and we had budgeted for them. We still want to be just deliberate in this next month or two as we're. We still want to be just deliberate in this next month or two as we're in making sure that we're we're in the best position to hire. So we feel confident, but we're always, we've been just continued to come back to this because the first thing a person's going to ask too, if we were to post a position, is do you feel this position's, it's a new position? Do you feel like you can hold on to it? And, you know, we're we're cognizant of that.
Thank you.
One of the responsibilities you listed was professional development. And I am assuming, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that the the curriculum specialist that we're planning to hire, that professional development for teaching will fall under that person's
Correct.
responsibilities. And and maybe I missed, but that what we're talking about with professional development and training for for the potential new position are, you know, you know, all the mandated trainings that we have to do every year. All the and other trainings that we might want to do. I mean, there's, and I think that there, I mean, I don't know what other people experience in their professional life, but I feel like I'm seeing more of these. There's
Yes.
there's technology, security and phishing and 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 reporting and harassment and things that are are there's the the ones that are required by law. And you want to make sure those are good. And then and there's all the monitoring of that. And then there's also other things that, you know, the that the the board may want to support other kinds of professional development. Again, not related to teaching and learning, but other.
Absolutely. So you're you're hitting on most, if not all, of what we what I think would fall under professional development that a human resource manager would would facilitate. You're right, on the certificated end, our director of curriculum would facilitate most of the professional learning for teaching staff. However, again, I want to, I don't, I don't, I want to lose sight of that. Half of our employees are non
Right, exactly.
teachers, right? So
Not teachers.
And Peggy, you know very well, as as Jen, you know, when you're working policy, that there are a number of policies
Oh, my gosh.
right, that we have that speak to, staff will be, you know, trained or advised of X, Y, and Z. So I think, you know, on the policy end, and typically those things we alluded to often result in some sort of local policy. We'd be well served by going through that, making sure that all of our mandated trainings are complete in the way that they're required to be completed. But I also want to add that when our previous district I worked in, our human resource director was really essential in working, we had a huge bus driving staff and you know, this was the first space that our our kids entered each day and it was the last space they they left each day. So our our human resource director did some really, I thought, progressive and creative trainings with our drivers on how to some in working with our building principals on, you know, how to handle sometimes the the tough kids you get on the bus or the scenarios that you you develop. We were doing some great work related to equity, just as I left that district that the human resource director was was leading among our maintenance and operations staff, because these are people who come into contact with our kids each day. So we don't want to take for granted that they have the same level of experience and training that are sometimes our teachers get. Quite frankly, they don't. So just making sure that we're keeping them in the loop of somewhat of what our initiatives are and what that means in their role when you're interacting with our kids in the cafeteria or in the hallway or you know, out on our grounds because our kids are outside a lot. You know, I think a human resource manager will take a more active role with that other part of our workforce.
I mean, now, just since I have the floor, I'll just say this. I mean, I, you know, do for folks that are watching. You know, I have witnessed in my, you know, five or six years on the board when, you know, on the fortunately, you know, rare occurrences where there are personnel issues, they can at times be extraordinarily time consuming. And, you know, I'll be honest. I I know that Dr. Benante would always need to be involved in probably in any issue.
Sure.
I know that our building principals would would need to be involved, you know, in 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 positions related to their building. But there are really other things that I would like Dr. Benante and the principals and, you know, to do. And then when it comes to Anne, I think we all already acknowledge that Anne wears more hats than most. You know, carries out more functions than than most people would be expected to. So so, you know, folks are already pretty maxed out. And then, you know, if, I don't want to say folks are maxed out, that's the wrong word. Our administrators have really, really full professional responsibilities. And when something like that rises to the top, it means something's having to 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 go, you know, and and so anyway, that's my take on it. And, you know, I just really briefly, you know, I was talking to somebody recently who worked at a I thought a pretty big company and they told me they didn't have like an HR, like an HR person. And I was like, what are you talking about? Like, how can you not have an HR person these days? Like, I just feel like HR is so important. Although, anyway, that's my, that's my feeling about it. So.
Yeah, I would, I think I would agree with the sentiments of a lot of people around the board have had the fortune of working at very, very large companies that have well-established HR policies for better, sometimes for better for worse. Sometimes you feel it. It doesn't enable you to do what you want to do. But in in this particular case, I think there's, you talked a little bit about risk mitigation. And I think it's also to echo something that Peggy said, we've all seen the situations in which we get someone who doesn't work. And the the realization is that we spend a lot of time and effort doing that process and bringing them on board and incorporating them. There's always a learning curve. Then you're starting all a year or two.
Right.
And the 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 chances of us not of the opportunity for us not only to have to go through that more often than we would like to or should have to, but also to move our curve, to move our experience and excellent curve up, right? I think we're, we we treasure and are delighted by the the teachers that we have that we that become tendered and become long-term members of the Haldane community. I would think that any school district would want us to continue to move that average of what our average teacher corps does continually push that up. So to your point of what is it about Haldane that is special that attracts people to? I can't, I remember my wife sitting in on a one set of interviews, informal interviews, a number of years ago, and she said there was something in the hundreds of people who applied. Just that process of getting through several hundred resumes to whittle down to a a group that you may think be good in and of itself is mind-boggling. And so how do we do a good continue to do and increase our ability to find the special people who would fit and work well here and be a long-term contributor to the culture and fit with who we are, but also be an excellent teacher. I think that's a huge upside. So I definitely, I think it's valuable. And as Peggy said, administrators do a bunch of things in something as important as hiring the staff that's going to be teaching our students for the next 20 years on whom we're going to spend a million bucks in their tenured lifetime. Having someone who is specialized in doing that is probably not a bad thing. Just saying.
Yeah. So for me, this has been something that so Dr. Benante is now the fourth superintendent that I've had this conversation about wanting a human resources person. And Anne has been a part of all those conversations as well. And, you know, Dr. Benante, you know, shared how we got where we are because the conversation always stops at the money. And it has always previously stopped at the money. And as Margaret has said, you know, her first thought was, well, how are we going, how are we going to pay for it? Not just now, but moving forward. And that's always where this conversation has had to stop because even though no, everybody can see the value. And Dr. Benante did an excellent job of pointing out all of the value, right? It's, there's so much value. If you can't pay for it, you can't pay for it. And it doesn't matter. So what Anne and Dr. Benante have done smartly over the several years is figured out how to pay for it. This isn't just luck. I mean, this has been like conscious thought. This has been a plan. This has been like, okay, seeing seeing the ways to craft it. And I think that it's really impressive that we've, in my opinion, we finally arrived at a place where we can we can create this position without it having to be a cost issue. And I think that's pretty tremendous. And I think it's really exciting to think about giving our district the benefits of a human resources person. And, you know, as Peggy said, and as John said, we've all watched superintendents spend a ton of time on personnel issues, intimately watched it and been a part of it. And not that they, this human resources person will don't get to be a part of it. But hopefully, it won't be something that completely derails everything else they should be doing and want to be doing, and we hired them to do. So that's also something that I'm excited about. So this this position has my full support.
Well, I'm the only person who hasn't spoken, so I feel obligated to at least
You don't have to.
to at least to say that, you know, I'm employed in a rather small organization that balloons and contracts and balloons and contracts over time based on the way our our job works. And, you know, we're, we don't have a full-time human resources manager. We hire one every year to manage these sorts of things. And it is a use, it's useful, necessary for compliance and for fairness and for really offloading those responsibilities to a person who's dedicated to making sure we're recruiting the best candidates and making sure everybody has all the information they need. And, you know, really, by the time you get to 50 employees, any organization should probably have an HR person in one way or another. And clearly, we've far beyond that. So it only makes sense. And that we can pay for it, I think. Is only that much better. So I agree with you.
No, thank you.
So Jen, no action on this this evening, just for the board's reference. And we do have a little bit of extra time between meetings with the President's Day weekend. So I will recommend and have a recommendation for our next agenda. But what I'll say is that, which would include the creation of the position, the dissolution of the maintenance position, because anytime we're not filling a position, the board should go through a process of eliminating it. But I would say in the weeks that come, I've notified my our staff today that we were going to have this discussion tonight because I, you know, tried to be very transparent and open about it because anytime you're creating a new position, it's likely to raise you know, questions about why and what. So we want everybody to be well-informed about this and ask questions. And, you know, I've notified the staff, I'll be available to answer those if anybody has questions as to why or why this would be needed. I would say that with the board too. Sometimes questions come down the road or after the fact, please feel free to ask. And I I just would point out, you know, a lot of this, what we've been able to do the last couple of years is, I'm going to give all the credit to Anne. You know, there's a lot of small I excuse my, the way I frame this, but seemingly insignificant, perhaps in the moment, financial decisions that are made, but over time add up. And something like refinancing our debt, you know, is, you know, in and of itself, it doesn't draw a lot of attention to it. But, you know, Anne's been just wonderful to work with over the last two or three years and really has put us in the position where we can have the needs have been there, but we've been able to now facilitate maybe doing something about these long longstanding needs that have been present in the district. And I I know it sometimes comes, I test Anne's patience in asking her to reexamine and get creative for how we could potentially solve an issue. But she always does it with grace. So thank you, Anne. And
My pleasure. They're called tweaks.
Tweaks. That's not what you call them when we're in the I'm just kidding. Jen, we do have a curriculum budget overview we'll provide. So can we keep rolling?
Keep rolling.
All right. So both Anne and I are going to take a part of this. So just had some few remarks. Oh, yeah. So since our last budget meeting, we've had the opportunity to sit with the governor's executive budget proposal. So Anne is going to provide some remarks related to that this evening. We're using the curriculum and instruction, anticipated costs as somewhat a backdrop to to also provide the board with an update on the governor's budget proposal. Excuse me. So just an overview, I'll give you some background information. We'll get into the governor's executive proposal, which includes some proposed changes to STAR that we feel are important for the board to be aware of. The, there are some concerns that we have, just reading the writing on the wall that we want to share with the board. We do have an initial tax levy limit projection that will now really help us solidify our budgeting for in these next couple of weeks. And then some other projected costs that we're going to go through before we close. So just some background information. From a planning perspective, we're assuming that COVID is still going to impact our operation well into the next school year. We don't necessarily know how. We're kind of in this unique place where the governor signaling some things opening up. He's made some comments about getting kids all, you know, back in school. But you know, as long as Department of Health guidelines stay what they are, and those haven't changed significantly yet, we're still operating in this really unique environment. And remember, just because our staff's fully vaccinated does not eliminate potential issues among our student body and concerns for transmission through our student body that may necessitate, you know, operating a school environment with added precautions in in place. Our relatively low class sizes were a key factor in our scheduling for this school year. So we were able, for the students and families who wanted to opt into in-person learning, we were able to accommodate a greater number of students as a proportion of our entire student body because we had relatively low class sizes. So that's a good thing that's working for us right now. And I I do think that our initial coherence planning work has emphasized organizational items or items that are largely organizational in nature, which won't cost us much additional money going into next school year. So we're always going to be in this mode of coherence planning. I do think our initial recommendations, Judy spoke to some of those during her curriculum presentation about a month ago. Again, these are things that are organizational in nature and or we already have money set aside. It's just a matter of utilizing those funds in a different way. So I'll speak to that a little bit more in the future. So this is just an overview of our current class sizes for your reference. So this is current. This is not projected into next school year. It's where we're at right now. So I'll just give you a minute to look at those. And as you know, come this time of year, between now and when the administration arrives at a final recommendation for the budget, we're examining these cohorts of kids in kindergarten through fifth grade, moving up. And then the current section allocations for those grade levels and adjustments that either need to be made in those allocations. The most speculative element of this is how many kids we can anticipate coming into kindergarten next school year. It is unique in Haldane, my experience, especially now in the pandemic, because we've had a number of families, as we, I mentioned earlier this year, who may be on the second home in Phillips Town area and want to make that their primary residence for purpose of their kids coming to school. So I still think we're going to be in an environment like that into next school year. So that's another anticipated dynamic to continue through with respect to COVID. This is just illustrative of our, in lieu of putting all sections up in the middle school, where we're This is just illustrative of our, in lieu of putting all sections up in the middle school, where we're falling in our English and math seven classes. Very competitive class sizes at grades nine and 10. And an overview of our English courses. And again, just as one measure, I could have selected math. I've just used English in the past, so I'm sticking with that. Ours regions? Yes, ours regions, H is honors. And I would say our high school staff, Julia, Amanda, just do an excellent job in navigating student course schedule development and making sure that our course catalog still has plenty of opportunities for our kids to take electives, other courses that they may be interested in, advanced placement courses that they may feel are necessary to prepare them to be good candidates for the colleges that they're pursuing. So that in and of itself is quite the task and tough to manage in a in a small school district. See, in a big district, you just you just include everything. And, you know, you'll always have at least 25 kids who want to take a course if you're in a big high school with a couple thousand kids in it. So in a small school, it's 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 complicated. It's it can be quite frankly, more complicated when it comes to trying to create a master schedule that meets our kids' needs and 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 their desires for what they want to pursue. And again, the class sizes, we're we're real competitive here as well. So I typically have a graphic just showing you where we stand in relation to the region, but I've had some issues with the state's database, just a bit of a lag in that. So for future reference, I may have some slides related to that in the final recommend in our recommended budget that we present. Now, this is just an overview. Again, class sizes being a key component, not just for our culture here, but also in light of the pandemic, it's only helping us. So I wouldn't advocate, even if we we may have the opportunity to examine a section here or there, but we're going to be real deliberate with that because that section and the low class sizes that it enables, depending on what our COVID-related needs are next year, and may enable us to keep, again, more kids coming in who want to or whose families want to. So we're we're being mindful of that through the budget development process. Secondary to that are coherence-related goals and two of which speak to professional development and curriculum development as two separate things. And we have two key strat areas of our coherence planning that that focus on this work. And these are areas that we have traditionally budgeted in. We've taken different approaches to this in the past. Spending a significant amount of money for an external support to come in and work with our teachers. There's been a bit of a shift in our thinking in that over the years to focusing a little bit more on how we could support this work internally. So as of right now, I just would want to draw your attention to our curriculum development, the money we have in our budget for curriculum writing. Currently standing around $12,000. That's a figure I'm still assessing for next school year because we're doing some great professional learning and work in the area of curriculum development as we think about those Halbain essentials. What's it mean to be a student who thinks critically, who can solve problems? You know, who has a growth mindset? What's that mean in our classrooms? There's going to have to be some revision of our curriculum. And our teachers are going to have to work with that. We're going to need to compensate them to do so, especially as we get into the summer months. So that's a line I'm thinking I'm working on right now in with Judy and with our principals about the scope of that and what's realistic through this summer and potentially through next school year. Staff development, we've we've increased our, we increased our budget on this for this school year. We conversely decreased our budget for both these professional developments. So this is somewhat based on where kind of trends we see our staff engaging in, whether it be through BOCs or whether it be through other regional conferences or workshops. So we really kind of examined that that funding in aggregate more so than the specific lines based on what our needs are there. So those are things that we're we're still pulling together for next year's budget development. I don't anticipate that these will shift dramatically. They'll shift somewhat. Again, it's the structural work behind the scenes that I think we're going to have the biggest shifts for next year. With that, I do want to turn it over to Anne, just to go through some items as it relates to the governor's budget. And Anne, since I have control of the slide deck, if you just want to let me know when you want me to go to the next slide, I'll I'll do that.
Okay, thank you. So the 2020-2021 executive proposal from the governor had encompassed two versions based on the amount of federal aid that New York State will receive or what he anticipates that we will receive. One is the $6 billion package. And at first, we, the original analysis showed that if the $6 billion package was the proposal that we went with, that our withheld aid, remember, it was some of it has been withheld at 20%, that that would drop to 5% and that we would get the other 5% if New York State received $15 billion package. Then now they have just recently walked that back where with the $6 billion package, all of our 2021 aid that was withheld will be released to us at some point. We don't know when, but before June. So luckily, cash flow is not our problem. And we're all right with that. So I'm happy to report that that money will be released to us. Again, no increase in foundation aid for Halbain. You know, sometimes we get $4,000. So that's not a not a surprise to us. Again, if you remember last year, the proposal was to take our formula aids and consolidate them into a single block grant. Ultimately removing our reimbursement process so that it doesn't matter how much we would spend on transportation or BOCs, which is two large expenditure areas for us, we would not get any additional aid that was removed in the legislative budget that was finally voted in. So, you know, we'll touch on that, but that might just be one of those things that that gets removed as it has in the past. As far as transportation aid goes, there are still some transportation aid that that hasn't been reinstated to us. This proposal does include reimbursing us for the cost of delivering meals and instructional materials during the pandemic, but not the costs of the ongoing payroll for transportation staff that we were mandated to pay. And then later, we're told that we're not going to get the aid for that, that there are groups including you know, the the business officials and many other groups that are lobbying to reverse that and to reinstate the whole aid to us since we were mandated for those expenditures. Also, I know sometimes this pops up. You know, New York State owes some prior year aid to us for as far back as 2007. And the rule is that there is no rule that when they have extra money, they decide when they want to dole some out to us. In this proposal is to wipe the slate clean for any prior year aid that's in the queue for us. It's $55,000 for us. It's lots of money for some other districts. These are usually rates that are readjusted for special ed tuition rates across the the state. And, you know, we might get a few thousand dollars of an adjustment. If we owe them money, they take it right away. But when they owe us, it could go for 15 years. And they'll get back to us. So the $15 billion package, so far, the only thing that they've committed to is that we'll get some additional foundation aid. No formula has been shared as far as that goes. And any of the other items that are negative in the the $6 billion package, they didn't talk about that. So the $15 billion will will have to wait and see on that. So a big area that has has people really taking notice of this year is the STAR. Specifically, the enhanced STAR exemption program. And I know that in the past years, there's been some adjustments to the way that STAR is is given out to our taxpayers. Usually, it's through an exemption, and that means that their tax bill is lower because part of their assessed value is exempt, and then their tax bill is calculated on that lower taxable assessed value. Many property owners, if if it's if the property is their residence, they're enrolled in the STAR exemption program, which is the basic STAR program. And then they're permitted to age up into the enhanced exemption program when, you know, usually when they become eligible for their senior exemption, which is a separate exemption. So right now, the rule is that a new homeowner has to take the STAR credit, and they don't get the STAR exemption. Which might not be so bad because they're not used to the lower tax bill. This proposal forces the homeowners that are enjoying the enhanced STAR exemption to not be eligible anymore. They can't age up into it. They have to apply for it. And when they apply for it, they're put into the STAR credit program. The problem here is that it really increases the out-of-pocket costs for those individuals that look for that lower property tax bill. Because what would happen is, I'd like to to give a visual on this, is we have a one tax levy. And that is what we talk about with the tax levy limit and how much we're going to let to collect related to school taxes. That levy is made up of two buckets. We have a bucket that our tax bills total. And we have a bucket that is STAR reimbursement from the state. So if the tax bills are going to be increased because someone loses their exemption, and then later on in the year, they're going to get a refund from the state, their tax bill is suddenly going to go up. And this slide shows you what an enhanced STAR exemption and credit is worth on a property. So someone who who may be having their tax bill reduced by $1,800 or thereabouts, if they lose that exemption and have to wait for their credit, they're going to have to come up with the funds to pay their tax bill. The only real benefit to this is that the governor has capped the savings if you taking the exemption, but has not capped the savings if you get the credit. So I'm going to use Phillips Town as the example. If you're getting your exemption off of your tax bill, that is frozen at $1,814 in Phillips Town. If you pay that in your tax bill, because you're not getting the exemption anymore, you're going to get a check for $1,882 later in the year. This is, of course, based on this current year figures. I don't have them for next year yet. So someone who can afford to pay their taxes in full and not get the exemption is going to benefit a bit. You know, net, it they're going to net out in a better situation. But a lot of people you know, budget for what they're used to and and maybe a manageable increase now.
And if I could just jump in, I think also part of your concern was that if people aren't paying attention to this, they're going to see their tax bill as well. And they're going to think their taxes went up by $1,800, even though they may have voted on a very modest levy amount that we were articulating would not would only result in a, you know, $200 increase to their taxes. But now they'll get the credit down the road, but they're going to see an initial impact. And if they're not paying attention to that, they're not planning for it, they're going to see their tax bill go up pretty significantly, right?
Right. It's, yeah, it's bad optics. It's it's what we're considering is a a large, it's an invisible state aid cut. And it has a big impact on really a population that might be on a fixed income and you know, a lower income than than someone who isn't eligible for the exemption. So that's the that's the part to keep our eye on. And it really is having schools look at this more closely this year, because I think it's the next slide. Yeah. So if you go to the next slide, thanks, Phil. For the first time that I can remember, the STAR payment is now on the executive budget run. And normally, it is not on there. So the governor is bringing it into the fold because he has a plan where it's going to reduce basically our aid. But it's never been a line item before. So this is what we have to keep our eye on. It's where I call it an invisible aid cut for next year. It could just slip into there because we're not going to increase our tax levy. We have that same tax levy, but the shift from the STAR reimbursement bucket into the taxpayers' tax bill bucket is not going to be evident in our budget development. So again, also on this, where I want to point out in the 2021 column, remember, we had the pandemic adjustment, 33,514, and then it's completely balanced out down below in the column under the Federal Cares Act restoration, which was the first stimulus bill. In 2122, it's now called the local district funding adjustment of $100,000. And it's coming back to us in the COVID-19 stimulus bill, which is the December stimulus. So this is also on an upcoming slide, but I'm going to mention it here while it's right in front of us. We're having this negative. I'm going to just focus on the 2122 column. We have this negative of $100,000 in local district funding that is restored below in the column under a stimulus bill. But we all remember what I remind you of every year when we talk about our fund balance. That we never use a nonrecurring revenue for operating expenditures. So what's happening here is that this is a slick way of the governor putting the stimulus money into the general state budget and washing it through state aid. And if we remember a similar a similar thing happened in A similar thing happened in 2009. And that's what started the gap elimination adjustment and something similar took us seven years to resolve. So just wanna put that out there and this. This is a lot of. There's a lot of talk where districts are really asking the governor to come up with another plan. So that we don't get to that funding cliff that um the gap elimination adjustment presented. In in 2009. So and then the second line there, it says services aid, that's that block that I spoke about earlier about the. This the reimbursement aids and here they are, just wanna pass through and show you that. There these are reimbursement aids and this is on the line. Previous so that you know you can you can see if you're saying, hey, what happened to our transportation aid, it's in this block. So the next slide.
The question about. And Phil, if you could go back two slides where one more there, yeah. The pandemic adjustment number, the 33,514 and the local district funding adjustment, the 100,000. Are those numbers that we created as saying, look, this is what we've paid here reimburse us for this amount? Or was it kind of a a formula that the the state said? Okay, you've got about this many students and you're about this size, so you probably spent this much money.
Yeah, I've not privy to the to the formula that came up with the 33,514. It wasn't something that was shared, that was our quote allocation. And what we had to do was justify the the restoration money at lower in that column. Where they took away the pandemic adjustment and said, we'll give it back to you from the first stimulus bill. If you can show that you spent the money in these appropriate categories. And you had expenditures that fit the criteria.
I see, so they came up with a number within some sort of formula. And said, okay, this is what we think you should have spent, prove to us that you did and then we'll give you the money.
Correct. Right, and there's probably something similar for the $100,000. That's still trickling in the the guidance on that.
Thank you.
Just for reference, we don't, I don't think we have the the figure in mind right now, but it's in the hundreds of thousands of dollars in terms of what our. Actual pandemic related spending has been. I think we're well over 300,000 and if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, the 33,000 was, you know, it was just, well, sure, which one do you want? So this, I think I already touched upon in in the previous slide when the numbers were in front of us. That really it's a way for the federal dollars that were appropriated to support school districts have been used to to balance the state's budget.
And can we go back to the 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 budget, the exact budget run really quickly? I just had a question about your your comment on the STAR payment. I'm trying to I'm trying to work through in my head how that works, how that will work, so was I hearing? Is the current situation that? We levy up to a number. So it's 20 million bucks, that 20 million bucks is in. Already takes into consideration the fact that some people will be receiving an exemption.
Correct.
Okay, so in the future, that number next year. We will again levy up to whatever our numbers, let's say it's 20 million dollars again, however, in the future. That STAR payment will be made, will be reimbursed for the people who are getting a credit. Back from the state to those individuals and then it shows up, I'm losing the thread. Show up here, how's that work?
It's showing up here, um it's it's very vague. Because a couple of different analysis that I've been on some webinars with. Are telling us that the $100,000 local district funding adjustment. Is somehow tied to our STAR payment. And we're we're all not there yet because.
Okay.
The description, the description of the different aid categories that I've reviewed and that came from the state. Don't tie those two together, but there's a lot of a fear of the fact that. Suddenly the STAR payment is appearing on an aid run.
Got it, okay, get it, get it, thank you.
Sure.
And can I ask a STAR question while you're there? So the STAR will only change for new homeowners and people who are aging into enhanced. Those are the only people that are gonna feel something different?
At this time, what what the guidance has been is that. The they're trying, the the governor and his group of of. Whoever that's advising him are trying to eliminate the STAR reimbursement to the schools. Completely. And then over time, that's going to be zero and that our taxpayers will completely. Pay the entire levy and that we won't be having money coming in from the state as STAR reimbursement. To cover the portion that their tax bills have been lowered by.
Got it.
And so you've got two. Two buckets that make up added together, they make up the entire levy.
So we basically levy the entire piece, but the taxpayers don't pay all of it, the taxpayers. A chunk and then the additional STAR payment, the exemption is paid by the state, we still levy up to.
Right.
Okay, fine.
Right, the STAR, the STAR reimbursement money that 1,000, 1,015,948, that's exactly what we received. This year in STAR reimbursement and that's part of the levy.
That's basically tax that the the taxpayers didn't pay and were exempted from paying, but the state is paying to us to make us whole.
That's correct, I apply for that amount.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Sure. And that's what makes this so tricky is that a lot of people, it's it's invisible almost, a lot of people aren't aware of. What's happening behind the scenes with the exemption and the STAR reimbursement and paying the full tax bill. Where and we have no control over it, if if the state says. You know, we're not giving you the money anymore, we're gonna send it right to the taxpayer. We still have our levy to collect and know where to collect it, but from the taxpayer. Who's going to get their reimbursement. After the fact, after they've paid it in full. But maybe won't understand why their tax bill went up $1,800.
Right.
So so the proposal basically obscures the the negative financial consequences over multiple years, so. I mean, is this effectively reinstating the GEA? I mean, is that? Or is that the concern?
There's, well, the the STAR eliminating the STAR reimbursement program. Is one concern. The gap elimination adjustment, which I'm sure will have a new. A new title, right? That fear is that. It we're we're having a local district funding adjustment to backfill the state's deficit. And they're using nonrecurring federal funds to backfill it to us next year. What could happen in the years to come could be reminiscent of the GEA. But I think because we've all been through it before, or many of us have. Who who are discussing this. They're already on to to what this could be and they're already saying, no, we don't want a repeat of that. It was, it didn't help us at all and we need to put the brakes on that, we don't want to go over that cliff again. So. I think we were done with that one too. This unfortunately, I I believe is a direct result again from COVID is that our maximum allowable tax levy. Is a 1.96% increase, which is much lower than what we're accustomed to, we're usually. Somewhere around 550,000, the. The main reason for this is that CPI increase was only 1.23%. Remember, we can go. Of the allowable growth factor is a just a portion of the tax levy limit calculation. And this year, this is the factor that is affecting us the most. If we were at the 2%. Our tax levy could increase another $153,000. Again, this is another item that is being proposed. And right now in lobbying that. Can we make the 2% the floor? Because then we can really plan better and it's not a roller coaster. We you want us to to adhere to 2%, then you know, it's probably something we could live with a a lot more than. What's that CPI increase gonna be since it's the lesser anyway? So that's. You know, something to watch. But right now our increase is just over 400,000. And if you recall that this is the program component expenditure trends and projections. Last month, we we had the administrative and the capital components. Did I say last year, I meant last month, if I did. So. Just wanna point out a couple of things on this slide, now that we're kind of a couple of years into COVID affecting our. Our budgets and our our actual expenditures. I want to point out that in the actual column for 1920. Remember, we had reduced expenditures because of COVID related closures. And the 1920 budget was built, of course, for a normal school year. And that budget, which does not appear on here, the program component was. Just over $7,200,000, so that's in line with. The trend, okay, so when we develop the budget for 1920. This program was 7,200,000, I'm sorry, for the teaching regular school. Because you might look at that and you think that it's really, it looks really out of out of whack when I'm looking at this myself, but then when you go back and you research. The budget for 1920 was just over 7,200,000. The budget for 2021 is almost 7.3. But that's in line with what would happen at the time that these budgets were created. We created the 1920 and early 192019 and we created the 2021 budget. You know, thinking that 2021 would be some sort of normal year for us as far as teaching and. And and all of the. The things that we normally do, so it was a pre-COVID world. But for 2122, we're still budgeting as if we're going to be able to operate. Without a lot of restrictions, we can't operate thinking that we're going to be, you know, crippled by. COVID restrictions again, at some point, we're going to be able to move beyond, probably with a lot of changes, we learned a lot. Over this year of what might work and what could bring us forward. So other things that I want to point out on here. The instructional media up. I think it's one of the only expenditures that's increased in the projected 2021 column. And that's understandable because of all the technology that we've been investing because of remote learning. Pupil services. If you look at the asterisks at the bottom, that includes guidance where we had. We had a long term leave replacement that there was breakage there. That was in the budget, that's why our projected is lower there. Also athletics, not only have we been operating without our full time athletic director. But there are a lot of events. That that aren't happening, transportation is included in this component. And we know that those expenditures are down also, but they're not going to be down forever, they're going to to go back up. So we have to develop in developing the budget. Plan for that. And all of those other items that I mentioned, you know, the the reduction in. It's not a reduction, it's just the vacancy for the athletic director, coaches that weren't paid. Drivers that weren't paid. All of those have an impact on the related employee benefits line as well. It's not that they were over budgeted, they were budgeted for expected. And with all the restrictions, that was. That was decreased just as collateral.
And why does the summer school number go so far down?
We did not hold summer school in summer of.
So that's last year.
Yeah, the projected 2021 is the summer of 20, because that this budget begins July 1st.
Okay, so it was last summer, there was no summer school.
Correct. The $65 were were some proctoring. So that line is summer school and proctoring and we did have. Some instances where we had to pay for some proctors, very few, obviously, but they're in that component.
Just a few thoughts from me to wrap this up, thank you, Anne, for taking such a lead on that. We do feel with the levy limit now calculated. We can better establish an anticipated budget deficit. Cause we're always in gonna be have a gap with state aid being flat. The building and department leaders have finalized their budget requests. For discussion and potential inclusion in next year's budget, so we're working through that. In the coming weeks and as I mentioned, our coherence planning work, which really is, you know, critical to our goals related to teaching and learning. Are largely resulting in structural change recommendations to start. So I don't foresee that impacting program component lines significantly. So we're in a good place right now to begin to further define next year's budget. And also any how we're gonna go about resolving a budget deficit and to provide that our board. With a greater level of detail as it relates to those matters in the coming weeks. I know we had some questions of Anne along the way, so we'll just pause for a minute to see if there's any other questions from the board.
Not for me, no.
Are we really only a letter E?
Next part goes quickly, though, right?
Communication from the public, I don't think we have any public that are still here, let's see. Two people hanging on tightly.
Sleep at the wheel.
Communicate with us, they may do so by using the raise the hand feature or typing in the chat. or typing in the chat. And we will address your communication at the next. We're going into information reports. These are here for anybody to review. And consent agenda minutes, we have a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Our minutes from the January 19, 2021 workshop meeting. Are there any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Financial, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And personnel, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Oh, Jen, can't hear you. There you are.
Is there anything you'd like to point out here?
Sure, I thought that's what you said. I just couldn't, reading lips. I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Moscow, who for some time served as our guidance counselor at the high school. Ms. Moscow is moving with her family down to Florida to be around her family, extended family. And we appreciate her service to the Howland Central School District. And we've benefited from having Ms. Cotton in this position. So this is bittersweet. Say goodbye to Ms. Moscow, but it also comes with a congratulations to Ms. Cotton, who is being recommended for the appointment into now the probationary position for the high school guidance counselor position.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 So we have our Board of Education mid-year self-evaluation here. It is 9:15. I, I would like to just put on the table that if we wanted to push this to our next meeting, I think that would be okay with me, at least.
Fine with me.
Yes.
Awesome. Fine with me and thanks for giving feedback. How about that? We'll start there.
Great. So Ms. Platt, if you wouldn't mind just pushing us to the next meeting agenda.
Okay.
Okay, going into new business, approval of the CSE CPSC placement recommendation.
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the recommendations of the Committees on Special Education and Preschool Special Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Full of the Public Health Emergency Protocol that we had a public hearing for. It seems like that was last week, but it was just.
Time has no meaning anymore.
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the Protocols for Public Health Emergency Section of the Howland Central School District Safety and Emergency Management Plan for 2020, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Is there any communication from the public? None that I see. So we'll go into the board reflections section. Does anyone have anything they'd like to share?
I would just like to share that I went to the, the virtual National Honor Society and it was lovely. It's one of those things that I am the one that always goes to. And I feel like it's one of those things that's so important for those kids to really see one of us there to know that we're supporting them. And it's such an amazing event and they did a great job to do it virtually.
I also, the virtual event was, it was of a different type. It was the Howland School Foundation event, which they did virtually. For anyone who has not seen, who did not get to go, I would encourage you to look at the, the teaser trailer that Craig Rockman and Lori Powers put up on Facebook, which are amusing in themselves. But I would like to thank the School Foundation for really phenomenal production values and really well done to bring so many people together to still have a great time and support Howland just in town. Great, great event as always.
Absolutely. I, I attended the community conversation on confronting racism that was co-hosted by the Phillips Town Hub and the Desmond Fish Public Library. And it was in part made possible by partnership with the Howland PTA's Equity Diversity Inclusion Community. It was a real open and honest response to a really horrible incident of racism and misogyny that occurred, some of you know, during an online event that many families in our community attended. Remember the Dr. Benante sent a message acknowledging and recognizing that the event occurred. And in that note, Dr. Benante asked us to, I think, use it as an opportunity to reinforce to our children a shared value for diversity and inclusion, which reminded me that late last November, I attended the NISBA webinar bridging the equity divide through board policy. And the, the Commission on Diversity Inclusivity of New York, I'm going to get this right, State Council of School Superintendents. They presented a proposed policy materials for district leadership teams to refer to, in order to formalize their, their commitment to equity and inclusion. And it was a real, it was a meaningful program then. And I'm pretty sure that whole conversation is archived to be viewed on demand. But one of the recommendations was that school boards consider adopting this optional policy to make a commitment to take a closer look at increasing equity in their districts. And NISBA crafted this sample policy to assist districts in putting systems in place to ensure that, you know, every student has an equal chance for success. So I thought just as a, as a follow-up to tonight's meeting, I, I go ahead and share those materials from that webinar with you and the link to that, that discussion. And just propose that maybe we consider adding that, the question of an equity policy to the maybe listed topics we discuss as part of our annual board retreat for the summer. So I think it's something that many districts are doing and it's incumbent upon us to have that conversation, so.
Yeah, I believe Garrison just implemented a equity policy as well.
Yeah.
Dr. Benante, do you have anything else you'd like to share with us?
Just thank you for your time this evening. No further thoughts. Thanks.
Okay, well then I'll make a motion to adjourn. May I have a second, please?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you all.
Good night.
Good night.